Are we good? Thank you.
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, good evening, tonight is Monday, April 12th, and I am calling this meeting to order. I apologize that we are running a few minutes behind schedule. Orange County Schools, oops, excuse me, Board of Education pledges to our family, students, and staff and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the Board adopts tonight's agenda. As we begin our work this evening, I want to elevate some important work that is happening in the Board's Community Engagement Committee. At last Friday's meeting, Kara Stewart, who we are so lucky to have as our literacy specialist at Flyn Cheeks, Ms. Doyle, is that the correct title for Ms. Stewart? I don't want to get that, okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure I got that correct. Began a series of three sessions meant to educate our Board and members of our community about the Native American tribes from North Carolina and this area specifically. A recording of that session, as well as future sessions, will be available on the OCS YouTube channel, and I invite all of you to watch them and learn with the Board and the Districts. This academic year, we have introduced land acknowledgement during Board meetings, and we don't want these to remain empty words. I ask that we remember the OCS educates our students on the traditional land of the Okanichi Band of the Saponi Nation, and I ask that we continue to grow as an organization who values authentic connections and repairs harm with the indigenous people of these lands. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you so much for that. This evening, we have several recognitions, and I will pass it over.
Why, thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. And so indeed, we do have several recognitions tonight, but first, again, thank you and good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, to the entire Board, our students, staff, and families. Tonight, I'm so thrilled to share that we do have a number of recognitions. Next slide, please. So, we want to recognize our Assistant Principals. It was National Association of Secondary School Principals facilitate the National Association of Elementary School and National Association of Elementary School Principals and the American Federation of School Administrators. Wow, three separate organizations declared the week of April 5th through the 9th, National Assistant Principals Week, to honor and recognize the contributions of Assistant Principals to the success of students in schools across the United States, and of course, right here in Orange County. The North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association supports this effort and wishes to recognize all North Carolina Assistant Principals for the essential role they play in leading schools in the state. We hope that everyone will join us in celebrating the important work, and it is important work of Assistant Principals in leading North Carolinas public schools. So, congratulations to Orange County's Assistant Principals. Next up, next slide, please. National Library Week occurred last week, but it's never too late to recognize our libraries. So, National Library Week was April 4th through the 10th. The theme was Welcome to Your Library, and it promotes the idea that libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and that everyone is welcome to use their services. During the pandemic, libraries have been going above and beyond to adapt to our changing world by expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their users. Whether people visit in person or virtually, libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become the best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. So, be on a lookout for a special post to honor all of Orange County Schools' media specialists. But we're going to give them a round of applause right now. So, thank you to our media specialists. All right, next slide, please. I said we had quite a few recognitions tonight, and indeed, we do. And so, tonight, we also want to recognize our Teachers of the Year. The results are in. School teachers in Orange County Schools have completed the process for choosing their Teacher of the Year for 2021. Through peer nomination, review of personal narratives, and voting, schools have chosen their building-level Teacher of the Years, also fondly referred to as TOYS. Once all school toys have an opportunity to complete a portfolio for the District Human Resources Staff, another selection process will begin, which involves a portfolio, virtual interviews, classroom visits, and another panel interview for finalists. This, in turn, will yield this year's Orange County Schools Teacher of the Year. The district winner will go on to compete in the Borough's Welcome NC Fun Teacher of the Year, that's a mouthful, competition, with a chance at the state title and all the perks and responsibilities associated with said title. This year, we are proud to announce the 2021 Orange County Schools Teachers of the Year. At the elementary level, we have Rachel Nichols from Cameron Park, Karen Raggett from Central Elementary, Logan Baker from Flyn Cheeks Global, Whitney Williams from Grady A. Brown. Next slide, please. Kristin Ross from Hillsborough, Andrea Perrone from New Hope Elementary, and last but certainly not least, from our elementary tier, Beth Voice from Pathways. Let's give our elementary Teachers of the Year a round of applause. Thank you. All right, on to the next tier. For our middle schools, we have Sarah Moore from AL Standback, Lori Merritt from CW Stanford, and Catherine Stanley Davis from Grably Hill. Round of applause for them. Congratulations. And last but not least, from our high schools, we have Evan Mitchell from Cedar Ridge, Sarah Wilson from Orange High, and Mike Gilbert from Partnership Academy. Let's give them a round of applause as well. So, congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. Stay tuned for details on the district winner in mid-May. Good luck to all of our nominees, and thank you all so very much for representing your school and our county, and for all you do every day in service to student learning and achievement. And we have one additional teacher we want to recognize. And so, first, let me note that this picture, of course, is a pre-pandemic picture, but we are celebrating another teacher, and her name is Lily Herman. Lily Herman was WRAL's Teacher of the Week for March 31st, 2021. She teaches a self-contained class at New Hope Elementary, where she works to ensure inclusion for her students. The news reporter stated that Ms. Herman has a unique bond with her students, and so we want to congratulate Ms. Herman for being named a WRAL Teacher of the Week. We are very proud of you, Ms. Herman, and we are honored to have you as part of the Orange County Schools team. So, let's give her a round of applause as well. So, that rounds out our recognitions for tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much, Dr. Felder. Always a joy to hear our recognitions. And with that, do I have a motion from the Board to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Miley.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Atherton.
Yes.
Ms. Doyle.
Yes.
Ms. Hauser.
Yes.
Our agenda has been adopted. Now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The Board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or student are not permissible during public comments. Our first speaker this evening is Samantha George. Mr. Jones, will you please unmute her?
She should be unmuted now.
Welcome, Ms. George.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Your turn. Start now.
My name is Samantha George, and tonight, I'm representing the Triangle Students for Social Justice. We're a club composed of students from a couple different counties dedicated to ending discrimination and unequal conditions in our schools. Since the death of George Floyd last summer, it's become apparent that the drive to improve equity has increased, but we want to continue to push to make these vital changes in our county. Looking over the current strategic plan and equity policy, we noticed they do contain some progressive strides, but we at TSSJ feel there's some improvements could be made to their wording and contents. We're asking for the School Board to bring up and address specific bias-related issues in the policies. We propose that a list of common incidents that occur due to ignorance and bias are included in the writing. We realize that it's impossible to record every single possible scenario, but we feel that putting some common examples in writing would empower teachers to call out discriminatory behavior. By providing a comprehensive and specific written-down list of problems that can occur, confusion as to what qualifies as discrimination will be reduced, and both teachers and students will have a clear understanding of what is and is not acceptable. In the club, when we were searching for examples of schools that already have policies similar to this, we found that Goshen College has done a pretty good job on their website of listing off examples of specific unacceptable actions. So, a quick search of Goshen College Discrimination Policy, discrimination policy, excuse me, will demonstrate what we're looking for. In addition to specific examples being listed, we'd also like to see the School Board make clear in the policy that rehabilitation rather than punishment is the goal for students that do not meet these expectations. As a community, we should strive to understand one another, and we feel that the school environment is an ideal opportunity for students to develop this empathy. But we also realize that this will not occur if students are left in their ignorance and simply placed in detention or suspended, instead of actually being taught why their actions are inappropriate. We understand that the past few months have been primarily focused on the return to school, but we want to make sure that the attention is still focused on making the school system an equitable environment for everyone. We acknowledge the strides that the Board has taken this year to make our schools more equitable, but we also hope you realize the significant need for further change. We all want what's best for our students and teachers, so we hope that the School Board takes the steps needed to ensure every single student feels welcomed and safe in school. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker this evening is Laura Straightfeld.
Ms. Straightfeld, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am reaching out this evening, and I've contacted the Board about this, urging the District to take the lead and adopt a key protocol to keep our schools safe, and that's screening tests for COVID-19, and in particular, PCR screening tests, the gold standard for identifying cases of COVID-19. Last week, just four days ago, the State Department, the State Board of Education met, and officials from North Carolina's Department of Health and Human Services made a strong case for doing screening testing in public schools in North Carolina. They spoke of increasing support for screening testing from the CDC, and evidence from national studies that weekly testing can reduce in-school infections by 50%. And they also discussed the state's suggestion and guidance to move away from requiring daily symptoms testing, strongly recommending screening, and offering support to make the process easier for schools. Screening testing, to be specific, is for people who may have no symptoms at all on a regular basis, such as weekly, to identify cases early, and this is according to two folks, Dr. Aditi Malik and Susan, my apologies, Susan Gale Perry from NCDHHS, recommended testing on a regular basis, and expressed their sincere hope that schools will be excited to take advantage of this opportunity as an added layer of protection in the classroom. They are also discussing at the state level requiring tests for events such as graduation and prom. And it is my hope that Orange County's District will take the lead in not only the support of the state, but in funding that will be available, perhaps for this school year and this summer, and certainly for next year. The funding that's coming from the federal government into North Carolina this week is going to be available for school districts in North Carolina from now through the end of next school year. So, through the end of the 2022 school year. The Durham School District has already begun working independently with a private lab to do PCR rapid testing of teachers, staff, students, and families. And at the State Board of Education meeting, DHHS leaders encouraged and applauded districts for creative and independent solutions in the time in which they're putting more formal processes in place. So, again, this would protect our school district at a time when there are still required tests for high school and other students at the end of this school year. Testing would ensure that the community is aware and has the information to make safe choices as to when to send kids back to school, and safe and information for not only the district, but for the Board and teachers and staff to make informed decisions as to school safety. So, I believe this is a new protocol that would be much more effective and is more highly recommended, given the information we now have about spread surges with variant cases that are spread by children, and that that may be coming our way very likely, according to epidemiologists. So, I'm hoping that you all will add this to your agenda at the next possible opportunity at your very next meeting, and use the interim time to pursue opportunities for Orange County to test the entire community in order to protect the safety of your staff, students, teachers, and the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes our public comment this evening. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Doyle and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton? And Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Our consent agenda is approved. The first item on our information for, actually, this is action tonight, is our autism, our, excuse me, resolution honoring National Autism Awareness Month. In Orange County Schools, I not only want for each of us to be informed about autism, but my hope is that we continue to grow into a community that embraces and celebrates neurodiversity. I'd like to thank Ms. Connie Crimmens, the Director of our Acceptable Children's Department, for helping the Board bring this resolution together, and Mr. Atherton, who is a great advocate for our EC department, will be reading the resolution for us this evening.
Thank you. Resolution to recognize National Autism Awareness Month, whereas the Orange County School System is a center of diverse learning, where all students are educated to their fullest potential, and is a center of our community around which we can come together in support of the education of all students. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a developmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, impacting the ability of individuals to communicate and interact with others. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's National Health Statistics report concluded, "The prevalence of autism spectrum disorder occurs in one of every 59 children in the United States." And whereas it's reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, but is more than four times as common among males and females. And whereas early diagnostics and intervention programs lead to significant improvement outcomes for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas Orange County School employs qualified and caring individuals to educate and work daily to improve the lives of students with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas April is designated as National Autism Awareness Month to increase public mindfulness of autism spectrum disorder, and to elevate the ways in which support can be provided to students, family members, educators, and other professionals who teach and care for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. Therefore, be it resolved, the Orange County School Board of Education hereby declares that we celebrate National Autism Awareness from April 1st through the 30th, 2021, and celebrate every student in our district and the unique gifts that each individual contributes to our collective. And recognize and commend the family members of children with autism spectrum disorder for their dedication in providing for the special needs of children with autism spectrum disorder. And emphasize the need to begin early intervention services for children diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder in an effort to improve potential outcomes for them. And honor the teachers, our professionals, and other educators who possess the desire, caring, and the skills necessary to teach, assist, and respond to students with special needs, including those with autism spectrum disorder, and those who tirelessly to educate and provide high-quality services for all students with special needs enrolled in the Orange County School District. Adopted this the 12th of April, 2021.
Thank you so much for reading that, Mr. Atherton. Ms. Crimmens, I noticed that you have popped on, and I wondered if you would like an opportunity to say anything?
Oh, sure, I'll always say something, and just to recognize our families, our students, our caregivers, our teachers, our staff, everyone who works to support our students with autism spectrum disorders during this month and throughout the year. Students with disabilities should be included, recognized, celebrated every day for the, just for what they have to teach us, patience, kindness, and ultimately making sure that we don't discount because of a disability, but we promote and encourage and hold all of our students to rigorous instruction each and every day. So, I just thank the Board for your willingness to allow recognitions like this, because it's so important for our families and our staff to know that we are in this together.
Thank you, Ms. Crimmens.
Thank you.
Mr. Atherton?
I do have a pen that'll be in everyone's mailbox, the autism ribbon, so everybody can celebrate as well, and I'd like a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Atherton and a second for Ms. Hauser. Is there any other discussion or questions or comments before we call the vote? Okie doke, Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Our resolution has unanimously passed. Thanks, everyone. The next item on our agenda is an update about Plan A. Dr. Felder?
Why, thank you Chair McKenzie. So, as you all know, on Wednesday, April 7th, Orange County Schools seven elementary schools reopened in Plan A while still offering a 100% remote option for families who do not want an in-person learning option for their children at this time. In Plan A, masking is still required, and at least three feet of physical distancing should be maintained. Next slide, please. Schools are finalizing the number of students in each of their schools who have opted for Plan A, and that disaggregated information will be shared with the Board on Friday. But in the meantime, by the looks of the pictures on this slide and a previous slide, Plan A implementation in our elementary schools is a huge success. And we know that success doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of work, a lot of planning, a lot of problem solving, again, just a lot of hard work mixed in with some grace and patience. So, with that said, hats off and a huge, huge round of applause to all of the staff, all of the students and families for making Plan A a success in our seven elementary schools. And so, next, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Jason Johnson, so if you can advance to the next slide, please. Mr. Johnson, who is our Executive Director for School Support and Improvement, he is going to speak with the Board about Fantastic Fridays. So, with that, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Felder.
Sure.
Good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Board members, and Superintendent Felder. I hope everyone is doing well. Before we get into the approval of fees for Fantastic Fridays, or what we call Friday School Care, I just want to briefly give an update on Supervised Learning Labs. Currently, we have eight students attending our Supervised Learning Labs, Monday through Thursday. These eight students are virtual, and they represent five families. This is a sharp decline in the number of students we've had been serving in SLLs before returning to school. At its peak, we had a total of 86 students enrolled in the three school SLLs. With the decline in numbers in the SLLs, we have combined our SLLs into one SLL at Central Elementary. The SLLs at Grably Hill and Cedar Ridge High School has been discontinued. Most of the extra staff members that we had in the SLLs have been placed in other jobs in the district. We find it really important to make sure that we took care of the people that have been taking care of our children this school year. We also have SLLs on Fridays, which we have approximately 25 students still attending. Just as a reminder, our SLL students are free of charge because they're either McKinnon Vento S's students or staff members of Orange County Schools. With that said, we're bringing, we're bringing forth tonight for approval, fees for Friday School Care when elementary students are out of school with a secretness learning. We're calling these Fridays Fantastic Fridays. This will give our families an opportunity and a place for their students to go when they're learning a secretly. Fantastic Fridays will be offered every Friday from 7:00 AM to 6:00. Fantastic Fridays will be offered every Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It will be at Central Elementary School with a maximum of 70 students. Our targeted group of students will be our current SLL students who will remain free and our after-school students. There will be a focus on academics, art, and STEM. We are requesting approval to charge a fee of $25 per Friday. And with that being said, our free reduced lunch students fees will only be charged $15 per Friday. And we will offer family rate for our families, $25 for the first child and $15 for each additional child. And again, we will offer it to our SLL students who are free. And just as a side note, in a future board meeting, we will bring forth a free recommendation for before and after-school care for the upcoming school year. At this time, I will stop for any questions and for you to go through the approval process.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Board members, Ms. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I see that the agenda item says that there's no financial impact. So does that mean we expect the fees to fully cost, cover the cost of Fantastic Fridays?
No, right now, we're only with 25 students. It can't possibly cover the cost.
I would, I mean, I appreciate that we're keeping the fees really low, but I think it would be helpful to understand how much we anticipate it costing the district.
Okay, I can, I can put that in Friday updates.
Thank you.
Other board members? Mr. Atherton?
So, so when you said 25, is, are you saying out of the whole district there would be only 25 students? Or I thought I heard 70? For the Fantastic Fridays?
So currently, we have 25 students that have been showing up from our SLLs on Fridays. So that leaves room for 45 additional students, which gives us a total of 70.
Okay, okay. So this will include breakfast and lunch as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I'm gonna ask this. I know it's not directly for right now, but is this being considered for summer school as well?
We haven't had any conversations about it. We could take that back to the team and have that conversation. We are gonna offer after-school during summer school.
Right, but I knew that summer school as presented was Monday to Thursday, and I know a lot of people are asking, what about Friday? But anyway, I appreciate it.
Ms. Howser?
I'm just curious how we came up with 70? And how do we know that's what, what, how does that compare to what people need?
Well, I would tell you, for the first Friday that we've had it, we've only had but 20 students to show up. And the 70 is based off of the staffing that we have.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I just wanted to make sure I understood, since that's Central Elementary, is it for all ages of students? Or is this for elementary students?
It's just, it's just for elementary students.
Just for elementary, and then when you said that there are 25, currently 25 students attending SLLs, is that, and you mentioned that we've closed the SLLs, but there's one left at Central. Are those students also just elementary students? Or are there other older students as well, just out of curiosity?
They're, they're just elementary students.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Do we feel like we are able to vote on this without understanding the full cost? Ms. Doyle?
Does it, is the idea that there isn't a significant financial impact because we already have the plan in place for the SLL? So it's sort of transitioning from an SLL to a Fantastic Friday? And then if our numbers go up and we need to hire additional staff, we'll have had more students sign up at that point? Is that the idea, or?
Yes, we, we're using the current funding from our, our current SLL funding. And if the numbers go up, which we're not really anticipating the numbers going up too much, then we will have to look at other means of supporting it.
Mr. Atherton, did you have a question?
Um, yes. Well, I was just doing a quick calculation on the monthly rate of the SS, Supervised Learning Lab, and I answered it for myself, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Ms. Smiley?
I mean, do we have sort of like a ballpark estimate of how much the district might end up paying for this?
No, ma'am, but I can calculate it and get it to you in the board updates.
Thoughts from the board about how we'd like to move forward? Ms. Doyle?
I, I like the idea because it seems like it has a more, more academic content to what we're currently doing, that we're wanting to maximize what we're offering these kids who are otherwise there for Supervised Learning Lab, and it's going to be some added-in curriculum, is my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Mr. Atherton?
I do share Ms. Smiley's concern about knowing the finances, but it's nine days, it looks like it's nine days left. And if we look at the original cost of the SLLs for full-time was about 140, and we're charging 25, which would have been 28, so it's $3 off. I don't think we're talking about a significant amount of money for those nine days till the end of the year. So that's, that's where I'm landing with this. This is not going to be a huge impact, but it is a great service for those families.
I agree. Ms. Howser?
Yeah, I was just doing some calculations.
I agree with, I agree with that. I, the thing where, where I'm kind of thrown is now that our kids are all back in school, what are they, and there's hundreds of kids, you know, I don't know if there's thousands of kids that have returned to school, where are they on Friday and their parents have gone to work? So I'm just a little surprised that the numbers are so low. And if we made this more broadly available, would we all of a sudden get higher demand? I, I just, it's just throw, it's, it's, where, where are our kids on Friday? Right? Where are they on Friday now?
There's all kinds of programs all over the place that have students on Fridays.
And, and Ms. Howser, to your, to your question, one of the issues is the fact that we started offering this on Friday so late. Many parents, and I'm a parent of four, many parents have already made plans ahead of the time.
Got it. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay with it.
And, and just, just as a side note, I mean, we're, we're gonna use, where are we gonna use the, the money that's been appropriate from, from the fund balance to pay for this?
Yeah. I'm sort of seeing enough nods to feel like we are comfortable moving forward. So I'm gonna ask if there's a motion to approve this.
I should do it for a?
Second?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Atherton, second from Ms. Howser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton? Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser? Friday Student Care Fees have been unanimously approved. The next item on our agenda is the 2122 budget. And I have a feeling we will be welcoming Ms. Raff.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Board Members, Superintendent. We are here again this evening to get a final approval of the fiscal year 2022 local operating budget that will become the board's budget after your vote this evening and will be what we carry to our county commissioners to request funding. Next slide, please. These all should look very familiar to you, so I will scoot through them rather rapidly. As we have talked about previously, all of our funding is based upon our student membership, or average daily membership, as we call it. DPI projects those numbers for us each year annually. And then we also fortunately have commissioners who fully fund all of our charter students. When you sum the projected ADM along with the students in charter schools and then take out those out-of-district students, which are those students who are sitting in seats in our schools who are not domiciled in Orange County schools. And these students are also not paying tuition. These are, represent students of staff who may not live in this county. We get a product of 8,110 students that we anticipate having in our district for the next school year. This is a net decrease of 50 from our previous school year. If we factor that against the per pupil that we received from our county commissioners for this current fiscal year, that would give us an anticipated revenue of 35.4 million. Next slide, please. Of course, when you look at that in comparison to what we received this fiscal year, that is a decrease of two, roughly 201,000. So in order for us to hold our funding at our current level, we would need an additional $25 per the 8,110 students to be able to recoup that 201,000. Next slide, please. Based upon input and a wonderful discussion with the board on April the 6th, I believe I'm remembering that date right, we have brought before you a continuation budget request that is comprised of the state salary and benefit increases. That is a 5.7% increase for our certified staff and a 5% increase for our classified staff. What is included in this local continuation request represents those staff members who are funded via our local funds. We do receive funds from the state for any salary or benefit increases that are passed in our budget law. However, we would not receive those for our locally paid, locally funded staff. To, we also added in our continuation to hold our ADM harmless, to keep our funding at the same level that we are this current year. And we also have added in the operational costs that we have incurred as a result of the service agreements associated with the hotspots, as well as the family liaisons that we have added into each of our schools. Based upon those items, that would get us to a total continuation requested need of an increase of $235 per pupil. Next slide. After further discussion, we have bring to you tonight for consideration an expansion budget request of $122 per pupil. This includes the items that are listed here that we have talked about in, in detail, and I'm happy to answer any questions. These would be recurring positions that would be, we would be looking for funding to be able to maintain those going forward of $122. Next slide. This is just a, an update of those Esser dollars that we have talked about so much. We did get more information at the end of last week where our actually planning allotment for those Esser $3 is actually $8,270,000. We are expecting for those funds to be released to us in the June or July of this school year, and they will expire in September of 2024. The Esser $2, of course, are roughly 3.7 million. The application just opened for those funds, and we do anticipate a release of them in May. And we have those funds available for either depletion or expiration through September of 2023. Next slide. So in conclusion, this budget is based upon a per pupil increase of $357 that we would submit to our county commissioners, requesting that our total per pupil need for the upcoming school year would be $4,724 per pupil. And are there any questions?
Ms. Stevens, were you raising your hand? Ms. Smiley?
Thank you for that, Ms. Raff, so much. I have a thought and a question. The thought is on the operations cost on continuation. I think it would be helpful to just spell that out a little bit better. I was, in, not better, just a little bit more detail in it. So I was surprised that that was the hotspots and the family liaisons. I actually thought it would be like the increased square footage and the, something related to that, maybe. So I think operation, I just got a little stuck on. The, I'm excited about that we're asking the commissioners for the things that are the recurring positions that meet our district's needs. The AIG facilitator or AIG teacher roles, it just suddenly occurred to me, the question, like, what are the student-teacher ratios for those positions in Chapel Hill? And whether we're sort of, you know, if, if those were particularly lower, I think it could potentially sort of be an equity issue in the, in the two districts in terms of ensuring that we're resourcing that at similar levels. So just, I guess that wasn't a question. It was just sort of a thought. We might want to find that out. That might be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. We will work to make sure that we determine what that information is.
Ms. Howser?
I have a couple of comments. I first want to thank Rhonda, Ms. Raff, because the budget is, the pieces feel like they're in, they're all in the right places. And it really is, it hangs together, so I just so appreciate that. I really like the idea of moving the hotspots and the family liaisons into the operating budget because we proved that we needed them and we funded them out of our own fund balance last year. It worked, they're important, highly used, and we moved them to our operating budget. So I think that is strategically a really nice way to introduce new ideas. And say, we tried it, it worked, we now want to fund it on a continuation basis. Hotspots are obviously not a, not a, I don't think that there's a question there. I have a couple of questions on the expansion budget. And most of the things on it look fine to me. There's a couple of things that throw me. And I'll start with recruitment and talent management. You know, and later tonight, we're gonna be talking about diversity hiring and really seeing if we could throw a wider net on the kinds of groups that we recruit out into, which I wonder if that means we need contracts, not more people? That we should try and build relationships with organizations that will help us bring this talent in rather than hire another person who may or may, you know, the problem is the district doesn't have the relationships. Not necessarily, another person won't change that. So I'm kind of interested in looking at that as more of a contract operation and maybe funding it out of one of the Esser things until we really figure out how this works. Because we have a hiring problem, and we have to fix it before we throw people at it, in my opinion. Similar with the maintenance technicians, we had that in the budget last year. You know, how, you know, if we hire the people, how do we balance the needs of 13 campuses? You know, and could we contract the work rather than, you know, hire someone to do it? And I don't, you know, and, and if we have a track record that says we know how the work comes up, then we could say, hire people. But I'm a little worried, I think we might get better service if we contract it, at least until we really understand it. I have a question on the ESL or the English Language Specialist. Are those ESL teachers or?
Yes, they are. They're English, they are English as second language teachers.
Okay, great. And I wonder if we should add two more family, dual-language, Spanish-speaking family liaisons? And I don't know what the right dual-language, Spanish-speaking family liaisons. And I don't know what the right balances. I know now our ESL teachers are being pulled out of classes to do translation services for families because a lot of our social workers and counselors and front office people don't speak Spanish, and our families don't speak English. So I feel like we've got a hole there. Again, it might be something we contract until we can change our hiring process. But I think we need to be planning for more English, um, uh, more translation services for our Spanish language families. Because we don't have enough. So I don't know what to do, if we should add more budget to it or fund it out of someplace. But we need to get more resources because it's, it's not working. Uh, I have a question on the equity facilitators. You know, we now have an equity audit going. There's another project that we're going to be talking about tonight. We have a strategic plan. How, what are the two equity facilitators going to do? What are their skill sets? And how do they work with the equity responsibilities that are in every single school? You know, and I, and I worry a little bit about making equity a silo versus making equity every single person's job. I'm just curious what those two additional positions are going to do.
So I will speak to that. Um, so I recently have been meeting with the principals of, and equity teams at each of the schools. And one of the things that they've expressed is that, right now, we have our equity leads who are doing a lot of the, the work of in each of the schools. Um, and that's not their main job, right? Their teachers, their counselors, their social workers. Um, and the principals have expressed, we would love to have someone who is outside of our building, who will come in and help us with, um, professional development. Help us with doing like equity walks and identifying where are the disparities and the gaps, helping us to set up a plan for how we begin to address them and, um, helping us with that support. What support do we need to put in place? How can we, um, how can those, that person help us to do the support that we need to be put in place? And so that would be, uh, the work of the equity facilitators, helping with that process.
Ms. Doyle?
Um, I had, I had two comments. Um, one, well, actually, I said three. One, I, I would love it. It'd be, it'd be awesome if our hotspot cost drops. Um, it'd be nice to think we get to a point where we don't need all our virtual, um, support as everyone gets back in school. But aside from that, I'm really, um, supportive of this budget. I remember that our maintenance tech numbers were calculated based on square footage of buildings and that we are not at the, um, industry recommended ratio of technicians to building square footage by a long shot. Um, I think of the, uh, the, um, where did it go? The, the equity, um, facilitators, you know, just as, as we've heard that, um, sometimes our Spanish-speaking teachers get pulled out to help translate. I know that some of our, um, teachers of color have also been, um, perhaps overly relied on at times to, um, to coach in their buildings, like the, um, the equity leads. And I, I just think that's critical. We heard at our last meeting how, um, we don't have much, um, representation in our AIG teachers, um, in terms of different ethnicities. And I think having some of that extra content from equity facilitators to make that, um, aspect of the classes more robust would be really important. So I'm very supportive of that. And finally, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Rath and her staff for the, um, the award that you all recently got, your Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. I think it's really important that we have such, um, transparency and high-quality financial reporting is what the, um, Association of School Business Officials International recognized in Orange County schools. So thank you, Ms. Rath, for all your, um, your integrity and hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. I appreciate that.
Good evening. If you don't mind, I did want to follow up on one of Ms. Hauser's comments, and I apologize. There was a lot of good discussions. I didn't want to interrupt. With regards to the translation and interpretation services, um, first, I certainly welcome, uh, we always welcome feedback. And our family liaisons do, um, spend approximately ten percent of their week coordinating with social workers and counselors to ensure that they're providing the services needed. So I will, uh, definitely touch base, um, with regards to the comment you made because I'm not aware of, of any, anyone being pulled to do translation or interpretation, uh, and that is certainly, uh, shouldn't be occurring.
Other board members' questions, comments? Well, if there, oh, Mr. Atherton?
Yes, I, I'd just like to echo. Thank you, uh, Ms. Rath and staff for putting this together. And, and I just wanted to just say this out loud because I went back and looked at the thirty-seven years of uh, per pupil funding, and only two years did we get over two hundred, and one year we got about three hundred. Um, so I do know that, you know, based on the history and where we are in the pandemic, that we will most likely be revisiting this, um, because of, you know, three hundred and fifty-seven is very high compared to what we've ever gotten. I do share concerns about the recruitment and talent management. I think I've seen this almost every year on our, uh, uh, budget, and, um, I do think we need to figure out how we can, um, get in teachers and staff quicker, where we don't hear about things being open for a year or longer, and how do we recruit or incentivize? But I'm not sure that should be a position until we figure out what that is. But, um, I'm just concerned with the amount we'll be requesting and what they'll actually provide.
And Ms. McKenzie, uh, if I may just add, um, on behalf of our operations team, we do not ask for the maintenance tech positions lightly. You know, when we take a look at all of our regular maintenance, um, upkeep that's required, but in addition to that, all of our construction projects that we have going on, our team is tapped. They are, um, we are very understaffed, and every single member is working above and beyond. And, you know, we really need the maintenance tech, uh, support to be able to, you know, stay up to date with all of the projects that are going on, but to not, um, be able to pull them from their regular meeting the needs, um, of the work orders that are put in by our schools every day. So, you know, we, um, have assessed the square footage needs as well, that on top of the, um, all of the construction projects and then all of the needs of our schools. Um, we do need the maintenance tech support, um, very badly. So we advocate very strongly for those positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. I know that we're going to have a lot of tough conversations and digging into all of these issues once we sort of know what our budget from the commissioners will actually be. And I look forward to that discussion with all of you, though it's always challenging. And I wonder if anyone has any last burning questions. I'm looking at the time, and, um, if anyone has anything they've got to ask before we vote, um, this is the time, and then I'm going to ask for a motion.
I, I have a follow-up, Hillary.
Oh, as, uh, well, you are not on my screen. I'm not ignoring you on purpose. I am so sorry.
It's okay.
Now, please go ahead.
Hey, I know. Uh, so, uh, Dr. Dawson, um, can you tell me, uh, if we have a plumbing maintenance person at this point?
I want to say that at this, I'm sorry, I want to say at this, um, time that I do not believe we do.
Right. And the reason I asked that wasn't to put you on the spot is my understanding is we can't be competitive with what we're offering, that we, we tend to get somebody in that position. They get to a point where they're skilled, and then they leave, and then we're back at fishing. Um, so I, I want to say I'm very supportive of getting additional maintenance staff in here. But I think at some point, we're going to have to consider our, our rates going to allow us to maintain what we have. Because I think one of the things that gets lost in this discussion is, we do have older schools. You know, we do have issues, you know, that's why we have such a large capital improvement plan. And, you know, to maintain the air quality and the comfort of our schools and making sure we're addressing those. I think it's an important area is the maintenance. But I think we may have to look at the funding of that to maintain those positions because I know plumbing has been an issue and specifically one of ours, our schools. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you for that, Mr. Atherton.
All right. Well, do I have a motion to adopt this budget?
So moved.
I have a motion for Ms. Smiley. Who was, was that you, Ms. Doyle? Okay. I have a second for Ms. Doyle, Ms. Hauser.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Our budget has been approved. Thank you so much for your hard work, Ms. Rath. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Equal Opportunity Now Schools.
Yeah, so that would be, um, me and, good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, the board members, and Dr. Felder. We are excited tonight to share with you one of the initiatives that we are working on as we work toward meeting our equity goals. Our first two equity goals in particular, as we identify and eliminate, work to identify and eliminate academic disparities and inequities in access to and success in programs and opportunities for our students. And also to create safe and inclusive racially, culturally, and linguistically affirming and relevant spaces and experiences for our students. And as we work to accomplish these equity goals, we are partnering with an organization called Equal Opportunity Schools in an effort to provide our, um, students, especially our underrepresented students, access to more rigorous coursework. And as we know, um, you know, access to colleges and what colleges are looking for when they review student transcripts are the level of, um, the rigor in the courses that our students took. And so this evening, I am, um, very proud to introduce to you Dr. Wall, who has served in public schools for over thirty-one years as a teacher, coach, athletic director, building principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent of schools. And throughout his work, um, you know what, his hallmark as an administrator has been to expand opportunities for our students. And he has always maintained his, a laser focus on student-centered decision-making by looking at the well-being of students and that interaction with student achievement. And so as he left, um, the K-12 realm, he didn't go very far. He is continuing to practice doing things with people, not to them, as he champions the work for equal opportunity schools that are caused to increase opportunities for low-income students, students of color, as a regional director for equal opportunity schools. And he believes that EOS gives students keys to doors of opportunity that they did not even know existed. And so to share with you, um, some of the work that we'll be doing together in our partnership. And just so you know, board members, we received a matching grant to be able to, um, support this work. And I just want to, um, let you know that the data that Dr. Wall is going to share with us is very high-level, and it was an initial, um, gap analysis that we asked equal opportunity schools to conduct for us, as they do complimentary, um, in our early discussion about, is this the right fit for this partnership? And so please know that this is high-level, um, and as we work together, of course, we will go much further. But we, um, going to the next slide. I'm going to ask Mr. Jones to make sure that everyone is muted except Dr. Wall. Um, and then Dr. Wall, if, um, you would like to start. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. And, um, Chair McKenzie, thank you for letting me be part of your board meeting this evening. And Dr. Felder, it's good to see you again as well. As Kathleen said, we at Equal Opportunity Schools give complimentary snapshots and data of your juniors and seniors across your two campuses. A little bit about EOS, uh, we're a nonprofit. Our home office is in Seattle. We're in our eleventh year serving high schools across the United States. We are now in over seven hundred high schools. The data there says six hundred and thirty, but we've now increased to over seven hundred and thirty-two states that we serve to identify students of color and low income capable but missing from rigorous courses. And in your case, that's AP and IB courses. Uh, I came to Equal Opportunity Schools after serving as a superintendent of schools for sixteen years. Eleven of those just outside Chicago and DuPage County. And Equal Opportunity Schools asked me to amplify their partnership work. Uh, and I work with states from Minnesota down to Florida, and I'm very fortunate to have the, my time in North Carolina as well. And some of your data, you saw, saw Charlotte MEC's reports and their experience with us. So we're very proud of our North Carolina partner at Charlotte MEC. And just want you to know that we have serviced schools in North Carolina and across the United States. And a real quick history of EOS. The founder of EOS was an AP teacher. And a dozen years ago, he was advocating to get more students of color and low-income students in his AP courses, and was met with resistance in his school counselor's office. His response to that was to farm equal opportunity schools. Our mission is very, very clear. We work with high schools. We give high schools money, as Kathleen said, a matching grant from our sponsors to make sure that we can change the life trajectory of students of color and low-income students. In the partnership with us, we simultaneously are working on two different levels simultaneously to help students. One is to change the adult mindset in the building towards students of color and low-income students while simultaneously creating a sense of belonging for all students within your campuses. This opportunity analysis that I'm just going to walk you through tonight is a snapshot of simply your juniors and seniors at Cedar Ridge and Orange High. It just gives you kind of an idea of your representation in your AP and IB courses respectfully. So Kathleen, if you could scroll down a little bit, I'll walk through this. Okay, this first slide just talks about your district. And then it'll, I'll also show you how you compare to our portfolio of over seven hundred high schools. This just shows you, this is your juniors and seniors. It shows your student population, students of color and low income, which is forty-five percent. And then your median high-income white and Asian students, which is fifty-five percent. Then we break it down by students by income. You have twenty-seven percent of your students, and this is data that you know, this is your data. Twenty-seven percent of your students are low-income, and seventy-three percent are median high-income. Then it breaks down by race and ethnicity. Again, this is your juniors and seniors. And then we go into upper-level courses, and in your case, that's AP and IB. You have twenty-five percent of your students, juniors and seniors, in upper-level courses, AP and IB. And seventy-five percent, so you have a disproportionate amount of students not represented in your upper-level courses. So then if you could scroll down just a little bit more, please. This shows your district, Orange County, North Carolina, as it compares to the seven hundred partners within our portfolio. Your dot is, is burgundy, but it's kind of right behind, if you go across the Y-axis percentage of students of color and low income. You're right at about forty-five percent. And then up the X-axis, you have students of color and low income represented in your upper-level courses. And again, that is not even twenty, not even twenty percent. So if you compare your two high schools to our portfolio, you would be in the low, lowest quartile in representation. If you could scroll down. And again, obviously Cedar Ridge is AP and IB, and Orange is AP. Now, what we did, we take your data and make it into meaningful information. Again, this is just a snapshot in time. I'm also fully cognizant, after talking to Dr. Felder and Dr. Dawson, that we can break this down in your partnership by your, uh, Native American students and indigenous students. we can break this down in your partnership by your Native American students and indigenous students. But for this snapshot in time, because we're cognizant that that's a, you know, it's one of your student populations. But for this exercise, we did your students, and I'll go from left to right. And kind of give you the big picture. We have a hundred and twenty-eight of your eleventh and eighth graders, which we targeted students, and those would be students of color and low income. You have currently twenty-two students targeted in AP and IB. That'd be students of color and low income. So left to right, we set the benchmark at around sixty percent. And that can be adjusted in the partnership to wherever the leadership thinks it should be. For this exercise, it's at sixty percent. Interestingly, your median high-income Asian students, which is only a number of nine, is not at the sixty percent. But that only represents eight students. So as we go from left to right, there'd be three students, low-income Asians. And then you go into the African-American students, median high-income, you're missing fourteen. And again, this is just your data looking to get equitable representation in all your high-level courses. And you have eleven low-income black African-American students not represented. Hispanic, Latino, you have thirty median high-income that are underrepresented and forty-six low-income. Multiracial, additional, you have six median high-income and three low-income. And your white, non-Hispanic, you have fifteen low-income. Now, interestingly, and we don't see this much in our portfolio, you have in your median high-income white population at Cedar Ridge, an additional a hundred and twenty, excuse me, a hundred and fifty-three students. So that total would be, if you take the hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and fifty-three, you'd have two hundred and eighty-one students that we would have outreach to. The reason that doesn't show is our targeted population, remember, is students of color and students of low income. But this is, you're kind of an outlier, to be honest with you. Your white median high-income have an additional a hundred and fifty-three students that should be represented to get equity of representation in your AP and IB courses at Cedar Ridge. And then we'd also take a look at your exam pass rate and your exam-taking rate. Now, if you remember, only about twenty-five percent of your students are in your upper-level courses. So you have a high exam-taking rate, which means you have multiple students taking multiple AP and IB course exams and a very high pass rate, which frankly, being a farmer superintendent, doesn't surprise me. Because you have a very small percentage of your students taking AP and IB courses and then a very small population taking more than one AP and IB exam. So I would expect your exam rate to be high. Does that make sense? I'm just going to pause here for any questions or insights. Our goal in the partnership is to increase the number of students taking your AP and IB courses, coupled with maintaining a very high exam pass rate. When EOS approached me three years ago and asked me to be a regional director, I pushed back pretty hard on, you know, being a practitioner. I said, I don't want to just get students in AP and IB. I want them to succeed. And we, they showed me the portfolio. We have students, not only increased the number of students in these courses in our partnership, but we maintain that high pass rate. So that's a snapshot of Cedar Ridge High School.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Of course.
Were you just saying, Dr. Wall, that like, in a sense, our, I feel like I heard two different things and I think I didn't hear clearly enough. But so it's almost like our, our taking rate and our pass rate is too high, like we, because we aren't drawing in enough students. Only those who are, it's more easily bound for success are the ones in the classes to begin with. But on the other hand, I think you're also saying, even though we're going to be bringing in a broader population of students, there's still going to be a high pass rate.
That's what we find. No, you didn't, Carrie. That is actually, what we find is you have a very slow, low percentage of students taking your courses and then taking the exams. So if you have that, I would expect you have a high exam pass rate. But what we have displayed and demonstrated in our portfolio is when you partner with us, you increase the number, the number of students taking the courses, taking the exams while simultaneously maintaining that high pass rate, which is extremely important. And that's why I was very, so I pushed back three years ago on some of the data. But I looked at it, I said, okay, not only do we increase the number of students in the courses, but we maintain success pass rates, because that's, that's highly important. Because we don't want to just stuff our AP IB courses with students and they don't have success. We want there to be broad-ranging equitable success as well. No, you heard that. I believe you heard that right, Carrie. Thank you.
Ms. Hauser?
This is really interesting, so thank you for this. How did you target the hundred and twenty-eight students that you're trying to move? And just curious, what are the characteristics of students that should be participating but aren't?
This, this really is just about taking your data and your numbers. We took your total student enrollment. We take your low income. We take your number of students by ethnicity. Then we find out the participation rate within your AP and IB. And for, just take a look at your African-American population. For there to be equitable representation at a sixty percent rate in the African-American, we would need to find fourteen more median high-income African-American students to get equitable representation in those courses and eleven low-income. So what we're saying to you is, we are saying to you that you have an underrepresentation of your students of color and low income in these AP IB courses. And to get to equity, this is the number we need. We're not going into any partnership and saying one hundred percent of your kids need to be in AP IB. What we're saying is, we are trying to get an equitable representation within all demographic groups in your high school in these courses. And again, the sixteen, excuse me, the sixty percent is a range we put in here just for this report. In the partnership next fall, Dr. Felder and Dr. Dawson may say, you know what, let's put that at fifty and just kind of be more pragmatic about it and see if we can get this number up. Because as you can see right now, you don't have sixty percent in any of your demographic groups. In our portfolio, we, our average is seventy-five percent to get equitable, equitable representation. So for your, for this snapshot in time, you're below that mark, but you have to have a starting point to get a reference to get to equity. Does that make sense?
Ms. Smiley?
Ms. Smiley? So something that I love about this chart is that you have broken out medium and high-income and low-income. So just to point out something that I think I'm understanding here, even if you are a medium or high-income black student, you are still more than three times less likely to be enrolled. Like if you are, if you are a medium-high-income white student, you are more than three times as likely to be enrolled in AP IB than if you are a medium-high-income black student. And I think breaking out data like this is really valuable for us to understand things in a more nuanced way. The thing I wanted to ask about how we'll deal with in all of this is the under-identification of low-income students in our system in the upper grade. So we, we have more than twenty-seven percent low-income students in high school, I'm sure. They don't fill out the free and reduced-price lunch application, is my understanding. And so there are a lot of kids not counted here who actually are low-income.
So, I'm sorry.
And that probably wasn't for you. It was probably for our team. It's something to work out, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I was just going to jump in to say that that wouldn't be the work of the Equal Opportunity Schools team. That would be us. And we are continuing to, you know, push for identifying our families with that need. And that's something that will be ongoing, Smiley.
But it's interesting, Ms. Smiley, if I might add. I saw that in my districts as a superintendent over sixteen years. One of the things that we do in the partnership is each one of your high school students will have a student inside card representing their dreams, aspirations, trusted adults, barriers that they perceive that they, that why they have been in AP IB. In addition to going into a student portal where you can query to find out what students are showing growth mindset. We work with Carol Dweck out of Stanford, and we have growth mindset questions in our student surveys so that you can identify these students in multiple ways, which could help with this underrepresented or under-reported free and reduced population you're talking about. It would help that outreach as well. You want to go to orange?
Yeah, let's go to orange, and then because there may be more questions after we see Orange High School's data as well.
Sure, that'd be great. Okay, once again, we set the benchmark at right at sixty percent. And in this, in your orange high school population, your median high-end, high-income Asian students are right at that sixty percent, fifty-seven. But again, as you move left to right, we believe there needs to be at least an additional hundred and thirty, eleventh and twelfth grade targeted students. Again, the target is African-American students, excuse me, students of color and low-income students. And you have fifteen median high-income that would need to be outreach in courses. Twenty-seven low-income African-American, Hispanic, Latino, you have sixteen median high-income and thirty-two low-income. Multiracial, eight median high-income and five low-income. And again, your orange high schools and outliers, again, because you have an under-representation of your median high-income white students. And to, that number that is missing there that you can't see above the hundred and thirty-two is actually two hundred and twenty-seven. So if you take the hundred, missing hundred and thirty, you have three hundred, would make it three hundred and fifty-seven students missing from Orange High and then twenty-seven low-income. Again, you have a high exam-taking rate, lower, lower pass rate in Orange High. But again, what this represents is a small population of your students in the courses, taking the exams, and then a seventy percent pass rate, which is actually, the seventy percent is closer to our portfolio average was around seventy-five percent. But again, you have a small number of students taking those exams. So I'll pause here if there's any questions or insights from anyone.
Any additional questions from the board? Look and don't let me ignore anybody. Actually. Yeah, Ms. Hauser?
And I just, can I understand the grant and the two-year process and, you know, because this is a two-year effort? And so what happened to year one? What happens in year two? How do we know it's going great? How do we know if there needs to be a force structure?
Well, you're going to get an abundance of data that gives you meaningful information in the, in the partnership. Year one is clearly outreach and getting students into the courses for the next fall. But we're simultaneously doing PD for your teachers. And when I say professional development, I'm not talking about instructional methodology. I'm talking about our, you get a partnership director assigned to your district, your high schools, working with your equity teams to break this implicit bias and adult mindsets in your high school staff from principals, school counselor, teachers. So break that implicit bias towards students of color and low-income students. So you're working on that simultaneously. Ms. Hauser, you said something earlier in the budget thing, if I could draw back to it. You talked about you can't do this in a silo. That, that resonated with me. I work very, I've been working very strongly with CASOS, the Social Emotional Learning, since two thousand and eight as a superintendent and up to date. And when you embed social emotional learning, when you embed, you know, how implicit bias, when you take those barriers away, I totally agree with you. You cannot do this in a silo. This has to be embedded among your staff. Because over time, what we want to do in the partnership is not only shift the adult mindset and increase student belonging, we want to work with you to shift the culture of the building. And we know that takes time. But I couldn't agree with you more. You cannot do this work in a silo. This has to be embedded within the school community as it moves a culture. So to your question, Ms. Hauser, you will be getting data, you're getting reports on student enrollment. You're going to get reports on students passing the test. You're going to get these equity, like this opportunity analysis. You'll get that for all your students for both campuses on a semester basis and how they're doing within the partnership. So you're going to get metrics that will tell you how the needle's being moved on equity of opportunity and access for all your students to AP and IB courses in both campuses.
And may I, and may I just quickly add to that, this is work that we know needs to be done. Our principals, they have also asked about this level of work that needs to be done. And when we shared this opportunity with them, they were very excited that they were going to be able to have the technical assistance from equal opportunity schools in doing this work. This is work that they were planning on doing. So they're very excited to be able to have the partnership and a network also of other schools that are doing this to be able to move this work. Because we know that there are plenty of students out there that are more than capable and deserve access to rigorous courses that are going to allow them economic mobility as they are planning their future. They deserve this. And principals are really excited. The school teachers and school teams are really excited. They can hardly wait to begin the work. So unless there are further questions, I just wanted to thank Dr. Wall for joining us this evening and sharing with us the type of work that we will be doing in this partnership. Thank you, Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Dr. Felder, great to see you. And Chair McKenzie, thank you for letting me be part of, be part of your board meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dr. Wall. And one of the comments I wanted to just make is that I think that this is a super interesting model where we're naming the number of students missing from subgroups to sort of have representation in these programs. And, you know, as I think about our district as a whole, I hope that that is a model that we can learn from even at the elementary level and the middle school level. And I know this is very specific work and I'm super excited about this opportunity. But I also hope that we, in some way, can start doing this at a younger level, too, because we know that we need to be nurturing these students from, from very early on.
But to that point, Chair McKenzie, does it, this work, it does go down vertically. Because you're forming the pathways coming into the high school. So I, in the, it does inform your middle schools and other opportunities as well.
Awesome. That's so exciting to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too. All right. So that is a wonderful segue into our next item, which is diversity hiring.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members and Dr. Felder and our community. I'd like to transition and thank, first of all, thank Dr. Wall for giving us some insightful information about we, how we can move our diversity work ahead with regards to equity goals one and two. What I'd like to talk about is equity goal four. As you know, equity goal four in our equity plan is recruit, rehire, support and retain a staff that reflects the diversity of the district and marrows the OCS student population. Diversity in our workforce is important at all levels across our school district, but none is more impactful as student achievement than our classroom teachers. OCS recognizes that the demographic mismatch between our teachers and students is problematic. This challenge exists with my colleagues throughout the state and with colleagues nationally, just like the issue that Dr. Wall talked about with regards to our representation of underrepresented students in our AP and IB courses. We note from research that all students benefit from having a diverse teacher. Diversity in our teaching staff prepares students to be Diversity in our teaching staff prepares students to be global citizens by exposing them to people from different cultures and social groups, as well as affirm students' cultural identities and enhances their learning outcomes. The research also tells us and supports their positive student achievement impacts for our underrepresented students when they have at least one teacher that looks like them. This can include better results in classroom performance, less disciplinary issues, improved reading and math test scores, improved graduation rates and increased aspirations to attend college. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update on the work regarding diversity hiring. Next slide, please. This is, this slide represents our framework for diversity in the workplace. Creating a diverse workplace doesn't happen by accident, rather it is a multifaceted and requires strategic planning. When focusing our work, we are now looking at nine key indicators to help us look at the issue of diversity recruitment across our organization. And I'll talk to this slide further on in the presentation. Our HR department continually reflects on how and what we can do differently to move our department work from a transitional focus to one that gives priority to strategic human capital management and organizational development. HR in collaboration with our Equity Officer, Dr. Dina Keeling, Jason Johnson and Connie Brimmer are helping to bridge the work together in a systematic way. So looking at diversity, not only in a silo, as was mentioned earlier, but looking at diversity and how it impacts many parts of the organization. Next slide, please. I want to look at a little bit of the data and then we'll talk about some of the strategies that we are putting into place to address the diversity hiring issue. The data sets below represent our licensed staff workforce and we break down those subgroups in the following ways. Classroom teachers, school support staff, school-based administrative staff and central office staff. And we'll look at some slides that represent the demographic makeup of these different subgroups. Next slide, please. Overall, the number of total minority classroom teachers has increased from thirteen point two in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year to fifteen point seven in the two thousand and twenty, twenty one school year. Our African American classroom teacher population, our African American classroom teacher population is ten percent, while our African American student population is fourteen percent. The percent of African American teachers has steadily increased over the past four years. The largest demographic mismatch between classroom teachers and students lie in our Latino workforce. Although the district has successfully increased the number of bilingual employees, the number of teachers identified as Hispanic is only three percent compared to the student population, that's twenty five point sixty three percent. Next slide, please. School-based support staff includes employees who support students in roles such as guiding counselors, social workers, media specialists, instructional coaches and facilitators. The racial breakdown of the data over the course of four years is less consistent in the, than the classroom teacher data. The district did however, see an increase of African American school-based support staff of five point seven overall the past year. Next slide, please. Overall, our school-based administrative staff has been consistently diverse over the course of the past four years. The data subset includes both principals and assistant principals. The racial demographic breakdown when looking at principals versus assistant principals continues to reflect the same trend. Principals forty six point two minority, fifty three point eight white. And in our assistant principals, forty one point two minority and fifty eight point eight white. Next slide, please. The racial demographic data of the central office has remained relatively unchanged from the last year. There were thirty point seven minority central office administrators in two thousand and nineteen, twenty and thirty one point six minority central office administrators in two thousand and twenty, twenty one. However, the diversity in an employee by race almost solely exists in the cabinet and director level positions. There is significantly less diversity of employees by race in positions designated support teacher instruction practices, such as our program specialists and our program coordinators. The representation there is fourteen point two minority employees. Next slide, please. The district continues to focus on increasing the number of bilingual staff across all settings. OCS has also hired bilingual family liaisons and we are working toward having a bilingual staff member at every school office. This slide references the number of licensed bilingual staff members hired over the course of two years. At the central office level, both licensed and non-licensed staff are included as some district leadership positions do not necessarily require a state license. Again, these numbers have steadily have held steady despite the impact of COVID on hiring. Next slide, please. And that's the bilingual slide there, next slide, please. OCS, and this is a little bit with regard to attrition data. Our district recognizes that retaining employees of color and unrepresented employees is equally as important to recruiting. We also collect attrition data and this data is collected by the Department of Public Instruction. Attrition data includes those who leave the district for a variety of reasons, which include retirement. When we look at teachers leaving the district from March two thousand and nineteen to March two thousand and twenty, that is the way that the state gathers the data. Thirteen point one were African American, two point eight were Hispanic, eighty four point one were white. Attrition is also broken down by beginning teachers. As research shows that the first three years are crucial as to whether or not a teacher will remain in the profession. So that information is also broken out. And that data tells us that three years is critical in supporting and retaining our beginning teachers. Next slide, please. Attrition data can be broken down by reason code. Reason codes are collected on a volunteer resignation form and the voluntary resignation form data is then transferred to the Department of Public Instruction and it helps inform the state with the state teacher turnover report in regards to teacher reason codes. This slide represents the teacher reason codes. And as you can see, the two highest reason codes are to teach in another public school and retirement. Next slide, please. This particular slide reflects teacher attrition rates by school. Simply stated, LEA attrition includes all teachers who were on the payroll March of one year and not on the payroll March of the following year. So this would include teachers who left the LEA but remain in education, teachers who left the LEA for personal reasons, teachers who were terminated by the LEA, teachers who left the LEA for reasons beyond the LEA's control and teachers who left the LEA for other reasons not listed above. Teachers who remain in the same LEA but removed from an instructional to a non-instructional role within the measurement period do not contribute to the attrition rate. The report conducted by the Department of Public Instruction does not include teachers who moved from one school to another school within the LEA or teachers who are on an approved leave. They continue as active and current employees. The report does not include information regarding local vacancies. The LEAs keep information with regards to their local vacancies and report this information to DPI during the first week or the first forty days of each school year. A couple of things to note with regards to the school attrition rates. If you look at partnership, partnership only has six classroom teachers. And so one teacher can impact its percentages very heavily. Another school to note is Central Elementary, one of our smaller elementary schools. And so one or two retirements or folks leaving of the school district has a tremendous impact on their attrition numbers. Next slide, please. Slide compares Orange County, this particular slide looks at the state comparisons by county. It compares Orange County with surrounding counties over a period of three years in regards to both the LEA and state attrition rates. Again, the LEA attrition rate is defined as all teachers who are on the payroll in March of one year, but not on the payroll the following year. State attrition refers, rates do not include mobility rates for each county. So that means a teacher that moves from one LEA to the other is not accounted in the state attrition rates. Last year, our LEA attrition rate was eleven point three and now it's nineteen point one and is above the state average of twelve point forty seven. Although there are multiple reasons for attrition, one factor, and we've talked about this several times, is salary. Chapel Hill, Wake County and Durham are not offering a sixteen percent supplement comparatively to our twelve percent. So I believe and we believe that this has a tremendous impact on our numbers. Teachers who change from one LEA to the other are not changing geographic regions across the state. Typically, they move from Durham, to Durham, to Chapel Hill and from Wake County. Last year, we had fifty two teachers move to another LEA. Nineteen went to districts outside of our geographic location and thirty three moved to LEAs in the area of which twenty four were Wake, Durham, Chapel Hill. There were also thirteen retirees in this group as well. So one of the challenges that we definitely see as a tremendous impact on our attrition is how we do supplements and we will be bringing a recommendation back to the board to recommend some changes in our teacher supplement schedule. Next slide, please. One of the most successful programs that the Human Resources Department, along with others in the district, have supported is our Grow Your Own program. Growing from within continues to be one of our best recruitment strategies to diversify our staff. Also looking at our student teachers have been another way to diversify our staff. We continue to work with staff within the district who are teacher assistants and other classified employees who are interested in becoming teachers. The program has steadily grown significantly over the past year to include many community members also. The goal of the program is to educate and provide support to individuals who want to pursue teacher licenses but did not come through a traditional, a teacher education program. To date, about fifty percent of the individuals who participated in the program are minority candidates. And again, we continue to push and support this program. Other ways to increase minority representation in teachers, and it's not a strategy only that our district is using, it's a strategy across the state, is how we look at alternative licensing. And so as you recall, we had Alternative Licenseur Fair back in February and we had over ninety five folks participate in that event, many of which are looking at ways to become alternatively licensed teacher. And so that has tripled in the past year the number of folks participating in our licensure information fairs to see how they can take advantage of, of the many different alternative licensure programs across the state. And again, looking at that, that program, it allows us to identify potential candidates for early hiring. Next slide, please. Throughout the year, this talks some additional information about the relationship between our Grow Your Own and the Beginning Teacher Support Program. But throughout the year, we offer licensed support for candidates to assure that they're clearing their license requirements. Right now, we have a funding approximately sixty thousand dollars to help support our teachers to work in some of the hard to fill positions. And as we increase our hiring and our recruitment, we have funds set aside that we will be able to implement recruitment bonuses for our, some of our hard to fill positions. It's been a strategy that we've used in the past and it is a strategy that we'll be continuing to use throughout this hiring season as well. Math and science are other areas and it is one of the growing areas in the alternative licensure program. Many of the teacher assistants and other instructional support staff elect to go into math, science and special ed. And so that is again, a benefit to the district as we look to hire these teachers, hire these folks into teacher positions. Next slide, please. This is a slide I showed to you earlier with regards to our framework for diversifying our workforce and our nine different areas. And so if you look at our nine different areas, it gives strategies under each that we are beginning to implement. I'd just like to again, thank Dr. Keeling, Dr. Jason Johnson and Connie Brimmer. We have created a team and we are moving forward again. I know that HR is sometimes seen as only a transactional and compliance department, but this framework is helping us to be able to move our efforts from compliance and transaction to transformation and helping us to be more focused on strategic human capital strategies. One of the things that took place today, I'm excited to say, is that we hosted a focus group of minority teachers across the district so that we could hear from them challenges and hear from them about advantages and hear from them about their experiences as minority teachers in the district and to hear from them some of the strategies that, that we can employ with regards to increasing our diversity strategies. Other things that we have that are in the works, we are, and I heard this mentioned, Dr. Wall talked about implicit bias. And so this is an area that we will be working with our principals around. When we look at organizational development, it, it doesn't always include curriculum staff development, but it also includes areas like implicit bias training and cultural competency training. And these are some of the trainings that we will be rolling out to our principals and sharing with our principals and other administrators who want to become recruiters and cheerleaders for the district. So in order to, to take up that mantle, to, to be part of the recruitment team, our principals and other hiring supervisors will have to go through the implicit bias training and some of the other training measures that we have identified. Early hiring and contracts is another way, another one of our strategies that we are using. And throughout this whole exploration or moving forward to kind of reimagine diversity and diversity hiring, as I started this presentation by as I started this presentation by saying diversity hiring is a challenge. It remains a challenge. It has been a challenge for our district, for districts across the state and across the nation. But that being said, we have a plan and some strategies that we are moving forward with, and we are hoping to come back and share with the board and the community some of the results of this particular plan. This plan can't work without our university partners and our community partners. Last slide, please. And so this slide represents some of the focus areas and strategies that we are moving forward with regarding our diversity hiring. We are looking to use and identify hiring teams. One of the challenges in our district is sometime when you're interviewed by an interview group, it is all majority. And so one of our strategies is to work with designated minority teachers and other staff members who can serve on these interview teams. And so, again, this one strategy that we have. We are moving forward with a virtual job fair in May, and more information to come with regards to that. And I am certain that early contracts will result from our virtual fair that we have planned for May. That concludes the presentation about where we are. We are just starting, and we are eager to move this work along.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham-Brown. Ms. Doyle?
Thanks, Chair Mackenzie. Ms. Cunningham-Brown, thank you so much. This is really exciting, and I have a couple specific questions. One was on the slide where you had the attrition reason codes. That slide that was back a few times.
Yes.
I just wanted to look at that one a little bit longer because what I was looking at was the difference based on race. Like a hundred percent, I was looking at the African-American, the interim contract expired. Okay, that was just one. Okay, okay, I just need a little bit more time to look at that. I was curious if the reasons differed based on race, and that's what I was just wanting to look at. Does anything stand out to you in reasons why we'd be losing some of our minority teachers versus, for reasons that we aren't losing white teachers?
Well, we always look at culture and climate and some of the reasons that some of our teachers of color list in their exit interviews and on their sheets is with regards to culture and climate.
Okay, which is, and is that, I'm trying to, is that in there? That's not really in there necessarily, right?
As an other, sometimes that's verb. Sometime people tell you things, and then maybe they don't want it, and they may choose something else that's more palatable on the resignation form itself. But in conversations with them, they give additional reasons as to why they're really leaving.
Thank you so much for your frankness about that. And one, another question I had, because I get excited about these, like the Beginning Teacher Support and partnerships with the HBCUs. And I've lost track of which ones of those are new. Like, some of these maybe we've been doing for a while. What have we added in in the past year or two?
The strategies with our historic Black colleges and universities, many remain the same, and it speaks to the building of relationships. And so we know that one of the major reasons or major ways to impact diversity recruitment is about building relationships, building relationships with our university partners and building relationships with our community. So we're really happy that we've been able to share this slide deck with some of our community partners who have been very active and engaged and interested in our efforts to recruit more teachers. We have been part of interview panels at the HBCU level. I have even gone to some of our HBCUs and talked about diversity hiring and the importance of looking at small districts. I've done that at NC Central. I've done that at some of the HBCUs in Raleigh, looking at our different career fairs. A lot of times, the HBCUs can't afford to have an education fair by itself, and so they have a career fair. So we need to show up there. We need to show up when they ask us to come in for mock interviews. So all of those things are strategies that we use. Virtual job fairs have become very important over the last year as many universities are not doing in-person job fairs. So we use, rely on several strategies that are successful with our HBCUs in building those relationships.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham-Brown.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Cunningham-Brown, it's good to hear about the new initiatives. But in the spirit of Grow Your Own, can you tell me where do we stand with the letters/contracts for the graduating high school students in Orange County? You remember, we started that. And what made me think about it is that there was one student that got one of those letters/contracts, and she's graduating in just a few weeks. So where do we stand with that? Do we reach out to them? Do we wait for them to reach out?
No, our future teachers, so you're talking about our future teachers program, and we are already in communication with our guidance counselors for graduating seniors who may be eligible for this recognition scholarship and early contract. And so we have a list. We know who has been reaching out to us. We have a number of folks that are scheduled to graduate, and so we will be working with those folks to make sure that they are still honoring their early contract. Of course, sometimes students choose other pursuits, and we certainly understand that. But the future teachers, this will be our first, as you mentioned, Ms. Stevens, this will be one of our first groups returning back to the district. So this is exciting.
Right, I remembered that because I saw, well, there was a former board member's child who got one of those contracts or letters or whatever. And I realized, recognized she's graduating in a few weeks from Carolina. So I was just wondering, you know, if we were moving forward on that. And thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham-Brown, for that. Thank you.
Howser, and then Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I first want to thank you for the, this really in-depth and candid presentation about what's going on. So this is very, very helpful. So thank you so much for that. I have a series of questions. First, just building on what Ms. Stevens was saying, are we actively recruiting our bilingual students for the, what is the program where we develop them into teachers?
Yes, the future teachers. We are looking at all students that are identifying themselves as going into a teacher preparation program, not only at the four-year level, but we're also identifying those students at the two-year level. And over the last couple of years, it has reflected some diversity, and I'm excited about that.
So that's, that's, that's great. The early hiring, I think, would be, is fantastic. Are we, are we doing anything with student teachers at the HBCUs? Are we bringing student teachers out of these, the HBCUs?
Yes, and as I mentioned earlier, that the Grow Your Own is one strategy with regards to early contracts, but also our student teachers. So student teachers have been another reliable source with regards to recruiting minority teachers.
Okay, so just two more quick questions. On the title, you know, as you start to look at attrition and things by school, the issues get really different. And one of the things that I keep hearing, and you could say, Bonnie, that's just hearsay, is that Title I turnover in elementary schools is very high everywhere. And it is for us as well, at least at some of our schools. And one of the answers to that has been to tie up our title, new Title I teachers in multi-year contracts so they at least stay for us, stay with us for a few years, and then we can invest in them too, in their professional development. So I don't know if we're looking at that. I also wonder if we are going to Spanish civic organizations. I talked to Dr. Feller a little bit about El Centro Espano, and they are talking about teachers who are certified in Latina communities. They're not, they're not, they're certified in South America, for example, and that they'd be interested in possibly, I don't know, we'd have to help them get certifications here, but also visa sponsorship. So I don't know if we're looking, if we're going to other.
I can speak to that. Of course, our district is involved in the Visiting International or the Participate Program that looks at teachers from around the globe to come and work with the district. We are looking at our Hispanic partnerships and looking at folks, some of the folks that we've hired in our bilingual liaison programs and our coordinators to identify, to identify community partnerships that we need to be involved in to make sure that we are exposing our community partners with those opportunities. So El Centro is just one of many, but we're exploring. We're looking at flyers. We had flyers done in both English and Spanish and disseminating those flyers throughout the county and places where we feel that there's a higher representation of Hispanic folks, either a variety of places, churches, civic organizations, and other community events.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Smiley? And, oh, Ms. Atherton, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sarah. Ms. Atherton, then Ms. Smiley.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions. So thank you so much for the detailed information. This has been very helpful, especially as we see the progress that we've been going on this journey. One of the things that occurs to me is I know that our TA program is one of, you know, our best programs of getting alternate methods of getting teachers in the classroom. We see, you know, we have them there, we know who they are. What are we doing for TA recruitment? So if that's a pipeline, you know, how do we, you know, go out and seek, you know, TAs to backfill as we, you know, pull people from TAs to teachers? Is there anything unique we're doing there?
Well, we are exploring some partnerships that other districts have used. For example, some of the temporary agencies specialize in TA and substitute hiring and recruitment. And so that is a pipeline that we are exploring as well.
Yeah, I think to Ms. Howser's comment about some non-traditional methods, this may be an opportunity for that as well. I had a question about student teachers and kind of a two-sided to that. One is, I did get a chance to meet a student teacher that, I'm not going to necessarily name the area, but not specifically in a teaching area. But when I asked them, hey, are you considering coming to Orange, you know, for your career? They said, well, there's no openings in this area. So it got me to thinking about if, when future teachers come back, what do we do if there's not a position open in the area that they have got their license? Is there an alternate method we handle that? I know we haven't had that, or it's now coming to fruition, but.
Right, and sometime, Mr. Atherton, we look at not only the area that they prefer, we look at areas that they may be eligible for. So say, for example, my certification was social studies, but I also had enough credits to be English. And so social studies was my preference, but I could have also been hired as an English teacher. And so we'll do the same thing or similar to teachers that may not be in a critical need area. We would have to look at other areas that they are eligible to teach in.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smiley?
Can I go next? Thank you. Agree, there's a lot of really good things here, Ms. Cunningham-Brown, and what you all have planned. A few different thoughts, I guess. I'm not sure if any of them are questions. One of them is, and I know that early on, I asked about this, and I understood there were different legal things around it. But one thing I think is really important in recruitment and diversity recruiting, if that's what we're calling it, is like, understanding your funnel and where in the process are you getting to the point where we're hiring the number of white teachers that we are? Is it in who we're recruiting or somewhere else in the process? And that can help you diagnose sort of what's going on. I would be still interested in understanding that and understanding, you know, is the issue that we are recruiting very few teachers of color or somewhere else in the process? Yeah, I think these actions in all of these different areas feel really important. Understanding what we think are the biggest letters, I think, would be helpful to me. So I have a suspicion that there's a piece around recruitment in general, a suspicion that, you know, we want to leverage our staff members' networks, but, you know, white folks' networks don't tend to be particularly racially diverse in the world. So that is a challenge. We need to make the district, like, authentically appealing to teachers of color because teachers of color who are very talented have many options in our area and many places to go. So I think a lot of what we're doing in the equity work has potential to sort of shift the culture and impact that. All of this has, if we do get the funding for that recruitment and talent management role, how important it is for that person. That person could dig in and could call up some of the folks who dropped off, dropped out in the middle of the interview process and like, ask them why they decided they were no longer interested in working for Orange County. Like, that person can do a lot more of the data analysis, a lot more of the active recruitment, going out, especially in the central office positions, like active recruitment for kind of color. You know, just more of that digging. So I hope we do get that position.
I hope we get that position as well. I agree that having this position will afford us to be able to collaborate even more with our equity department and the collaborative efforts that we want to employ with regard to recruiting more teachers from underrepresented groups. You probably already know this as well as I do that the state, the state's pipeline for folks, of teachers going into the profession is at a dismal low, one of the lowest numbers in over ten years. So the pipeline is restricting. And so we don't graduate enough teachers in the state to hire the number of open positions that we have. And I spoke about this several times and about the fact that our minority candidates have many opportunities now that they maybe didn't have in the past. And so teaching and nursing is not the only professions that minorities can go into now, and that makes it even more competitive. So I look forward to the work that we have started here. It's much work to be done. And again, this work is to be done across the organization. Just like equity is embedded in everything that we do, the diversity hiring piece is equally as important and embedded in all the work we do across the organization as well. And I'm thankful to be able to just talk with you a little bit about our thoughts. We have many, many ideas, and so we're looking forward to putting some of these best practices in place and then coming back and sharing with you all where we are in the work.
That's great. And I will just offer, I think I shared this with Dr. Felder, that how to do high-quality hiring and especially mitigate bias in the process and do it in culturally competent ways is a thing I do in my day job. And I know that I'm a board member and playing this governance role. But if you ever want an extra set of eyes on like, look at our hiring resources for X type of position, what do you think? Or I'm just happy to, I'm happy to do that. If that's inappropriate, then then fine, but this is a thing I do in my day job, so.
Well, we welcome all of the help and your expertise. We've talked before, and I value your expertise in this area.
Ms. Howser, and then I'm mindful of the time. And so after that, I will ask for any last questions.
Okay, this is my last question. So I just saw a little off-the-wall question built on something that Mr. Atherton said. And that's hiring, having positions open. So if you see good candidates, diverse candidates in particular, and you don't have, I mean, I presume you're always recruiting, right?
Yes.
So if you get good candidates, we don't have an open position, do we have a way to hire them into something else? And I was thinking about having teachers as floaters, TAs as floaters, instead of using subs. And I don't know if that blows the budget, but I was wondering if we can create some open positions to make it easier for us to bring in diverse, good diverse candidates when we find them.
Right, we tend to have the TA positions and the board has given us extra TA positions. I know that is not something that we always have the luxury of. With the early contract process, we always have the opportunity when we run across a talent to offer an early contract based on our projections. And so that's where the projections come in place. And being able to use that particular tool to help hire and recruit minority teachers, even if we don't know the specific position, we use our projections to help us make that decision.
Thank you.
Any final thoughts from board members? Thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham Brown.
Thank you.
This was very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so our last item this evening is a discussion about our next strategic plan. And so I will turn it over to Dr. Felder.
Why, thank you, Chair Mackenzie. So as shared previously, the district's previous five-year strategic plan wrapped up at the end of last school year. We know that having a strategic plan is a must. It is an absolute must. It is essential. It is our North Star, our roadmap, our compass, and then some. And it should be reflective of everyone in our community. So the next strategic plan will articulate the district's mission, vision, beliefs, goals, and strategies for how we will achieve our goals, as well as how we will measure our progress and hold ourselves accountable. There are a number of stages in the strategic planning process. The first stage of our strategic planning process involved drafting the district's beliefs, vision, and mission statements, and you'll hear about those tonight. Staff students and the community used an online portal to express their thoughts about what they want to see reflected in the district's next mission, vision, statements. There were approximately 150 entries. Additionally, there were well over 130-plus hopes and dreams statements gathered from families, from and staff from last year's Listen and Learn sessions that have informed the statements you'll hear tonight. So tonight, the board will have an opportunity to provide feedback on these statements. Next slide, please. So this slide is a slide that should be familiar to you. You will continue to see it. Hopefully, that red ring will keep shifting to the, well, my right. And, and so it outlines the timeline for the development of our strategic plan. While we should be focused on the task outlined in April, we are actually still working on the task in March, for good reason. As you know, we paused to ensure that we heard from our students. We again had this portal as a way to engage, but really wanted to ensure that we heard from our students. And you'll hear more about that process. But at any rate, so we're still in the drafting beliefs, mission, and vision statements, which are critical and which everything else in this process hinges on. And so after tonight, we hope to be able to move forward with April's task. But we are making progress and we're proud of that. So speaking of belief statements, next slide, please. Let's begin by diving in. So here is the definition of belief statements. They are the ideals and beliefs that motivate the leaders and employees of an organization and are the essential priorities behind the leadership's decisions. Next slide, please. So if those are our belief statements, then what are our vision and mission statements? And I won't definition, I won't read all of this. However, I do want to note that a vision statement focuses on tomorrow and what the organization wants to become, while the mission statement focuses on today and what the organization does. So again, tomorrow and what we hope to become is the vision statement, while the mission statement is about today and what the organization does. Next slide. I mentioned input, and so these, again, are some of the ways that we gathered input. Next slide. And through the portal, which again, we had approximately 150 entries. Want to give a shout out to Shannon Braxton for pulling together this Wordle. And so she took all of the entries and dumped them into a Wordle. And so the words that are the largest are the words that were repetitive and speak to what was emphasized by our families and staff and community members and students regarding what they want to see reflected in the next vision, mission, and belief statements for the district. So where are we with regards to our draft belief statements? Here they are. So based on the input and feedback, these eight statements emerged. We were, again, slated to bring these statements to you. And the definition of each, you'll see in a few minutes on March 22nd. But again, we paused because we wanted to ensure that our students had a chance to weigh in, particularly our high school students who will be moving on, who have matriculated through each of the tiers, wanted to get their input. So while doing so pushed us further behind schedule, we are glad we paused to ensure they could share their thoughts and provide feedback. So now I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Keeling, our Chief Equity Officer, and Ms. Melanie Stowe, Public Information and Family Engagement Officer, as they met with a diverse group of students representing a number of different interest groups last week. And they're going to walk you through each of the statements in more depth and will share the feedback provided by students. So Dr. Keeling and Mrs. Stowe.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone. So Ms. Stowe and I met with a group of students to get their input on the belief statements. And you can actually advance to the next slide, please. There were students represented from all three high schools, and they represented a variety and diversity of student organizations, including student equity teams and cultural organizations, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, FFA, student government, the Red Cross, as well as some academic organizations such as the National Honor Society, Avid, and the Minority Achievers Program. Ms. Stowe?
Good evening. So for all the input and time that was devoted to this process, beginning with Listen and Learn sessions from more than a year ago, and yes, that was pre-COVID, and to finally be at the point where we could share all the efforts and the input and all the dreams and big ideas in a draft format with our students was really exciting. And frankly, it was a little, caused a little anxiety, because what if their feedback, feedback was, this isn't it? Happy to say that that's not the ending of the story. But we explained to students that everything that had gone into this and that our final approved strategic plan would have supporting goals and objectives and timelines and action plans, and that it was critical that we would be able to brand and succinctly convey our beliefs to stakeholders. And so I said, we're going to share some belief statements with you. And imagine when you walk in your school, when you walk in a classroom, when you walk in the gym, anywhere in your building, you walk and you see our mission, our vision, and you see belief statements, very brief and to the point. And we need to know, when you see these draft statements, what do they mean to you? And so that's what they, we got their input on. And we used technology. So they entered their feedback without hearing what the first person said or, you know, having the tone change based on the first two people to speak. They entered their feedback via technology. And so what we want to do is share the belief statements with you and share their feedback. And, and a welcome surprise that there's a lot of alignment between the two. So on the next slide, the first belief statement was value diversity. And I want you to be aware that the only thing the students saw was value diversity. We told them that we had a statement as to what it meant to us, that we had spent many of meetings and a lot of feedback and input that Dr. Felder referenced. But what we want to know is if every employee in Orange County schools, every employee, teacher, bus driver, front office staff, technology support, every employee, if they value diversity, what does that mean for you? What does that feel like? What does that look like in your day-to-day instruction? And that's the question they answered for all of our belief statements. And so I'm going to let Dina share now, and you'll see on this slide, we have at the top what we had. They didn't see that. They just saw value diversity. And then at the bottom, we have what they, what they provided.
So as you can see, we're getting really good at using like Answer Gardens and Wordles to get feedback and input. And so the concept is that the more people that use those words, the bigger they get. And so for value diversity, the students overwhelmingly said that it means all are embraced. Other words that they used were promoting and embracing minorities, feeling welcome, community healing, being non-discriminatory, equal rights, and feeling free to be myself. So you can also see some of the words where maybe one student said those, but those ones that are bigger that I just said were ones that numerous students said. So next slide. So the next one was put students first. Again, they didn't see the statement. We just said put students first. And for our students, putting students first to them looks like accepting student input and students having a safe space. It also looks like listening to criticism, equal respect, protecting mental health, and complete acceptance. One of the things that you'll begin to notice and that we need to be mindful of are those reoccurring words and themes that we heard from students. And so you'll begin to see that there are different belief statements, but some of these same concepts keep coming up for our students.
The next belief, strive for excellence. And it's interesting, there were several belief statements. At the end, we asked students, just their general feeling, but there were several. They said, this is a given, like, is this a belief? And this was the first one. They said, this is what, what we do every day, right? We strive for excellence. And so we had a conversation and a good dialogue about until we feel like we have all the tangibles in place that, that, that show that, that maybe we do need to state it. And that while you may be fortunate that you feel like that's the case for you, that it's just, we want to ensure that we all understand that's the expectation. And so if everyone strives for excellence, what does that look like for you? And so themes here, not just what is it, but what isn't it? And they said, no hypocrisy. It means providing support and respect within staff. It means follow-through, understanding, inspiration, and best effort every day.
Five. So the next belief statement that we had for students was make equity paramount. The first thing was, the feedback that they gave us was around the word paramount. They were like, that really isn't resonating. Like, they really had to pause for a second and be like, like, what do you mean by that? So that's one thing that we, we need to be mindful of. We don't want the belief to get lost in, in words that we're using that people can't relate to. It doesn't resonate. Another point that they made, much like Ms. Stowe said, this was another one where they were like, this should be a given. Like, here again, it's like, we're making these things beliefs, but it should just be. But as they discussed it more, they were saying, but it's not happening. And so it needs to be written out, and it needs to be something that is front and center so that we make sure that we are keeping equity in the forefront. They also said that they felt like there should be an emphasis on anti-racism work and combating racial and socioeconomic inequities in education. And that this should not just apply to teachers, but that it should apply to all school staff, and it should apply to students as well. And so they want to make sure that, like, this anti-racism work, that addressing inequities doesn't get lost and just make equity paramount. And so some of the words that they said that this meant to them was accountable and having tough conversations. And here again, we see that non-discriminatory coming up. Next one. So the next belief statement is to provide a safe environment. And so the student said that providing a safe environment means that there is no judgment. And to do that, that it requires communication, it requires open conversations, that all ideas are accepted, all views are respected. A safe environment is where students can express themselves. And here again, another one of our reoccurring themes is that support for mental health. Next belief.
Fortunately, in preparation for our focus group with students, we quickly realized that the term whole child is our term. That's an educator's term. And so to set this up with students, the first question was, celebrate the whole child. Do you know what whole child means? They all said no. So we did have a supporting slide, and we did go in depth briefly that we, and we shared with them that this term, whole child, originated from ASCD, which stands for the Association for Supervision Curriculum Development. I won't go into details, but they've been around 75 years, have 126 countries that are members. We'll leave that there. The whole child approach goes beyond the academics, and it ensures, as stated at the top, that each student is healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged, and ultimately sets the stage and the standard for long-term student success. So we shared that with students before they answered. And as they said with the word paramount, they also said, don't use whole child because we don't know what that means. And it's, obviously, we want people to understand what we're saying when they see our belief statements, and they may not take the time to read the supporting sentence. Our students, once they reviewed this, their input was, again, recurring themes regarding mental health, acceptance, being reliable. And if it's our belief to celebrate the whole child, then we would place more emphasis on it. And there was, as I mentioned, a consensus to better explain whole child. One student said, I don't know what you call it, but isn't it just all students can learn and succeed, but not always the same way? And so part of our work is that we are going to take that, the feedback from them back to the group and wordsmith some things that they brought up so that they see their voice reflected. Um, back to the group and wordsmith some things that they brought up so that they see their voice reflected.
Okay, so the next belief is inclusive culture and climate starts with us. Uh, so one of the things the students did was to kind of process. So what's the difference between this one and making equity paramount? And they had um a little conversation. Around that and they felt like this one was really focused more on accepting culture between and among staff. Um, um, one person said like intrastaff. They also, the students are really brilliant. They also felt like the word inclusive. Sometimes gets connected to integration. So when we talk about segregation, desegregation, integration. That um. It doesn't always mean that the space was created with that group in mind. And so they wanted us to really think about, so if you're talking about inclusive, is this a space that was created for everyone? Um, is this a space where yes, you're here, but you don't necessarily have voice, you don't necessarily feel comfortable here, we just let you come in here. And so um, some of the words that they said. Dead sensor, diverse staff. Goes all in line with everything that we have been discussing today. Um, so that is also um. Very encouraging when we see that we're all saying the same things here. It means honest education, so like accurate representations of history. Um, it's ending unconscious bias, again, something that we just discussed. And it's for the adults to be the role models. If we want to have inclusive cultures and climates, the students are very much asking for that. But they're looking at us saying, you all need to be role models for that. Um, and then here again, we see those words that continue to resonate, acceptance, feeling free. Um, and again, uh, much like they said about um. The whole child, they're like, this is not currently being shown. And so we need to have more of an emphasis on this if it's a belief for us. Next one.
For students, uh, if we're being accountable for what we do, then we admit wrongs. We are transparent. There is equal accountability. And we hear. Listen to. And trust students. And one point that came up in our conversation several times. Was the question, what, how are you going to enforce this? And so we had a great discussion, uh, because I don't know about you, but when I was in high school, I didn't know a thing about a strategic plan. And we had a great discussion about what is the purpose of a strategic plan? And so it was that we must first set the expectation that we put it in writing. That, that this is part of our onboarding for all new staff. And that these statements will be supported with action plans. And strategies to ensure they occur. It's not just a book on a shelf. And so it was really, it was great conversation to have with them. And I, and I will tell you, they also were like. Why do you have to have a vision and a mission? And I said, you know, y'all figure that out in your next careers. And let us know how it works out, but we're going to stick with the vision and mission because that's what we do. Um, but, but it was great conversation for them to be part of that. So. Um, and then the last one, our last statement, do great work together. Now remember. They didn't see. So the next slide, thanks. Uh, do great work together. They didn't see the statement after that. And the first thing a student said was. Wait a minute, um, aren't we part of this? Like. I mean, this is us too, right? This isn't just, just teachers doing great work together. And then another person said, I think you should use the word collaboration. Together, just, it was like, do great work together. It, it just kind of lost the, the excitement. And so it was funny, I told them, I said. Both of those words are in the statement, but that's a great point. Uh, because if you're skimming our beliefs and you feel like you're not part of it, then that's not good. Uh, so we will take a, a, a look at that and. Um, and this was another one that the student said, isn't that understood? Like, don't we just do great work together? Uh, but they had a great conversation that you can do great work in isolation. And, and they even commented with COVID and some of the, the remote learning aspects and some of the social distancing that it's. That we don't want to lose sight of working together. And, and so they felt like this was really important to keep. And um. They also, you know, again, just said. That they wanted to be part of the, the process, that it's not just teachers doing great work, but it's all of us. And I assured them that, that that was definitely. Uh, the case. So what we told um, uh, the students, as I mentioned. Is that we're going to take a look at these and if you have anything that you'd like to add, we welcome that. But we, we're going to take a look at these and we are going to put their input into this, that we will share this with them because we do want them to know that. That student voice is appreciated. And the great part, um. At the, at the very end, I'm like, we're like, here are the nine belief statements. Should, should we not include something? And should we add something? And they said, this is it. Uh, we think you should change a few words, but this is it. So it's really exciting to, to see their. Um, their excitement and buy in into this and to know. That all this, the families and teachers and everyone that, that, that put thought into this process. That we do understand our students, that, that we are in sync. Um, and we're just going to make some of these tweaks for them.
Thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Stowe and Dr. Keeling. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we certainly appreciate our students and valuable feedback and all of their wisdom. Oh my gosh, um, wise beyond their years in many ways. Uh, and so, um. We, as uh, Ms. Stowe and Dr. Keeling said, are going to go back to the uh. Table and, and um certainly heed and respond to their uh feedback. And so greatly appreciated, much needed. And it was worth every um, uh, delay to uh get their feedback. Um, I think it will only enrich and uh make our uh. Mission, vision and belief statements are stronger. So speaking of the two, uh, mission statement. Uh, again, a mission statement focuses on today and what the organization does. So here is the draft mission statement. Uh, we believe that um, uh, what we do. Uh, is to educate students in a safe. Inclusive environment. Where we celebrate, engage and inspire them to reach their maximum potential. Next slide. And again, vision statement focuses on not today, but tomorrow. What is it that we hope to be? And so we hope to prepare every learner, each and every learner for lifelong service and success. So at this time, I am going to uh turn things over as we um. Uh, just before we give the board an opportunity to weigh in, I'm going to turn things over to Leanne Winter. Who is the executive director for the North Carolina School Boards Association and Nancy Black is an attorney. Uh, with the North Carolina School Board Association, both uh, Ms. Winter and Ms. Black are um. Facilitating uh the process of drafting this strategic plan. This is not their first rodeo. Uh, with drafting strategic plans, they work with districts across the state. Uh, they bring a lot of expertise and guidance, they push us, they, they make us think hard. And uh, we appreciate uh their collaboration. So. With that, we're going to turn things over to uh Leanne and Nancy. And uh, they are going to walk us through the next steps and then we'll open it up for uh, a board feedback. Nancy and Leanne.
Um, thank you, Dr. Felder. Um, good evening, um, members of the board and everyone else. Um, so. What we're going to walk through now is kind of what the next steps will look like for the strategic plan and designing it. And just give you a, a little bit of a snapshot as to um, once it is all put together. Um, what it is, what it will look like. Um, so the next step will be, um, once we refine these few words and also incorporate. Your feedback this evening, um, we will develop. Um, three to four goals. Um. We will bring those back to you again for comment because. Um, we don't want to move on without your buy in into the next part because. Again, these are all building blocks. Um, so each goal will then have an objective and act, or objectives. Action steps for each objective and then performance measures um for each of those. Um, all of this will be um created in Symbly, which is the um. Product that you use for your board meetings. They also have a strategic planning module. And um, it will create a scorecard within that module. So you will be able to um analyze. And collect data through the course of the five years of the strategic plan. Um, and then also as you are achieving things or maybe at times struggling to. Um, meet those, you may change your objectives and your action steps and your performance measures some throughout the course. Um, of that five year period. And if we'll get to the next slide, please. Um, so these are just very quickly the definitions of um what these components are. A goal is a specific target, an end result or something desired. Um, the end towards which the effort is directed. Next slide, please. An objective is the specific measurable results for the initiative's broad goals. How much of what will be accomplished by when? Next slide. Action steps is how you're going to get it done. Who's going to do it? What exactly you're going to do, what resources are needed, um, what partners might be involved. It's the really, the, the. The bill, the true building blocks of how you're going to accomplish um your strategic plan. Next slide, please. And this is the part where you will start seeing the numbers. Um, and this is your performance measures. Um, this will be the data that you will collect and analyze. Uh, monitor the progress um over time. Um, within the plan. Um, so for example, you might start. Um, you might have one where your reading levels for third grade are a measure. And so you would put in your base year, you would go ahead and have. Um. Percentage goals potentially for each of the five years, or you might do every other year. Um, and at the first time you measure it, you would look. Um, you may have hit that number, that's great, then you just keep moving on. If you didn't hit it, you might want to adjust the numbers in the out years. You may have exceeded the number, you may have already hit the second year's number. And so you might want to go in and adjust the numbers. And so. That's why this is a living and breathing um document and Symbly really is a powerful tool to help. Um, keep it a living and breathing document as opposed to one that just gets put up on a shelf. Um, and doesn't really get looked at again. Um, next slide. So this is um just a little bit about Symbly. Um, this is um just an overview slide. Um, of, of kind of what Symbly is and what you can do in Symbly. And if you'll go to the next slide. So this is just a screenshot of um, the, a strategic plan from another district. And you can see at the top, there are different ways to view it. This is the view of the performance measures. Um, so as you can see, um, what you are looking at is the performance measure. Um, for construction costs in this district. And so they have each of the fiscal years. They have the target, um, which was eighty five percent, the actual was eighty. And so they did not meet their target. And you will see in the later slide, there's some color coding. Um, that Symbly will do, it'll turn green if you hit your marker. Um, it'll turn yellow if you still need some more work. Um, and red if you really just have not started it yet. And you go to the next slide, please. Um, so here, here is that. So you see, this is the plan detail itself. You see the goal, the objective, um, the initiative underneath it. Um, and you, you see the color coding as to where the district is on um. Whether it's, and these are mostly in progress, a few have not been started. Um, this single screenshot does not have any that have been completed yet. Um, for this particular um demo. Next slide, please. So here is um, the balanced scorecard, which really shows all the numbers. Um, you can look at um, all of your performance measures. They get attached to each strategy and then you see the target and the actual. And the color coding is very easy to read to see where you are and how successful. Um, you have been to align within your strategic plan. Next slide. Um, this is just a snapshot of the alignment between the strategic plan. And um, the board agenda. Um, if you all choose, you can um. Uh, essentially attach each item in your board agenda to the, the things in the strategic plan. Um. That it is aligned with and you can see how many meeting items. Um, were associated with that specific strategy. Um, with that specific goal, you can then click on those individual numbers. It will take you to the meeting. And to the individual agenda item um that was discussed in this, that you can do the same thing with your policies. Um, if you decided to use their policy module, though I don't believe anybody in North Carolina um is doing that yet. Next slide. Um, so this is our timeline. Um, Dr. Felder, did you want to take over here or do you want me to continue?
You can continue, Leanne.
Okay. Um, so we are really trying, we are, our original goal was to try to get this done um by the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, we are already a little bit behind, so we are really hopeful um to still try to get this done no later than. Um, probably the first of September right now. Um, we know that you all really want a new plan in place as early in the school year as possible. And so we're really going to have to push going forward. Um, we hope that um, the work that has been done thus far with the um. Few adjustments from the input of the students and some input from you will give us the foundation. Um, to move forward um a little bit faster over the next couple of months. Um, what the board will end up adopting is the beliefs, mission, vision and goals. Um, we suggest that you not formally adopt beyond that because the rest of the document is a living and breathing plan. And you want to be able to allow for change within that plan as circumstances come up. So for example, um, obviously no one had anticipated. What this last year has looked like for all the school districts across the country. And you, if you were locked into all your strategies and all your measures and. That would just have been in this last year, something untenable and you all would have been. Um, voting on a gazillion different things. Um, to try to get the strategic plan to adapt to the change in the circumstances. Um, but because it will be in Symbly, you'll be able to view it, you'll be able to monitor it. Um, and see how things are developing over the course of time. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions and I think the next slide is um for you all to get. Oh, again, here's our timeline. Um, you notice that April is circled. Um, we're really, we're doing March work. Um. And so um, we, we are going to try to catch up a little bit, but I really believe that we're probably. You know, given that summer is coming. Um, one of the things that we will be doing is each goal. Um, once you all have had your input into that, um, there will be a committee for each goal that. Um, will work on all those um other parts. Um, we are going to include. Um, students, parents, teachers. Um, and obviously over the summer schedules are a little bit um more difficult. Um, to potentially align, um, just because people scatter a bit and we probably at a minimum lose that. And we probably at a minimum lose that July 4th week. So next slide. So, Dr. Felder, I'll turn it back over to you at this point for the discussion of the beliefs, mission and vision.
Thank you so much, Leanne. And so board, this would be your opportunity to share your feedback.
Mr. Atherton, you can start us off.
All right, so first of all, I appreciate the background and all the hard work that everybody's done to get us to this point. I know there's been a lot of challenges doing this, especially in the environment we're in. I just had, you know, from looking at this earlier, just had some comments. So I'll just go through three of them that I have. The, the first one is on the mission. I, I feel like where we say, we celebrate, engage and inspire, that, you know, saying we challenge the student as well. You know, that seems like a big part of making sure that we're putting the rigor in is, you know, having that challenge. Under do great work together, you know, this year we had put together the community engagement group. And, you know, I, I felt like saying actively engage students, staff, families and the community at large to collaborate is really saying that we want to be proactive about it and not reactive. And then the last one I'll mention is, under the accountability, I, I personally would love to see if we could include transparency somewhere because, you know, a lot of feedback I get is, Ray, you know, how do you show me you're doing that? Right? You can say it, but how do you show me? And how do we be more transparent about it? But I'll, I'll stop there and let others speak, but those are the, the first three that I, I had had.
Madam Chair, this is Brenda Stevens. I would like to move to extend for 10 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Okay, we have 12 more minutes, folks. Ms. Hauser?
Okay, I, I have a couple of, first, a process question. And I was wondering if there's been any effort here to reach out to the broader community, the stakeholder? I think of them as the stakeholders who are paying the bills. And, you know, it could be anything from the chamber, to the community centers, to the MLK collaborative, to FFA and 4H. I mean, there's a bunch of them, but I was wondering if we reached out to any of them to get their thoughts on what they would like to see in the strategy. So that's, and then on the accountability point, I was wondering if I can suggest an edit? Because I think everybody believes in accountability, but you either are or are not. And so I'd like to suggest the statement read that we are accountable for the outcomes for every student. And that, to me, means we are taking responsibility for the outcomes and decisions that we make or don't make that change them. So again, we are responsible. And maybe it comes through in the vision. So, oh, and then the other part is, I'd love to see something about a commitment to service. You know, because I didn't see that anywhere. And that's, you know, we essentially operate, I think we operate in service to the students, families and stakeholders who have entrusted us with the education of Orange County students. So I don't know if there should be anything that reflects the, a culture of service. You know, I think culture of excellence, culture of service, culture of accountability. Those are the three tenants that, that I'm filtering this through. Those are my thoughts. I think it's a great, great.
I'll just jump in here because I have sort of a comment that tags along with what Mr. Atherton and Ms. Hauser were saying. I think it's interesting that the piece about accountability is something that resonated for all of us that we wanted to, well, for many of us that we wanted to comment on. One of the things I hope that is captured in that or somewhere in this document is about, and this speaks to accountability, but admitting our shortcomings, being honest and being humble. Those are some things I'd really like to see named in some way. Other board members? Ms. Smiley?
First, I just want to plus one on Will's comment about adding challenge into that phrase in the mission statement. I also think we should look at that phrase. The way that I learned like a list and then a phrase at the end of it is that every word in that list should be able to, the, the phrase at the end is like, students to their full potential or something like that. And celebrate students to their full potential isn't grammatically correct. So I think there might be something to sort of work out in that phrasing. A couple of other specific phrase thoughts. One is in celebrate diversity, it says regardless of students, you know, race, gender, et cetera. And I just wonder if there's a more affirmative way? When I hear regardless of, it sounds a little old fashioned and a little like colorblindness or something. And there might be a more affirmative way to say the positive side of that instead of the regardless of what your background is. And then I, I just, when I think about the kinds of feedback I've gotten over time, there's something about whether we are really knowing and nurturing and taking every single student, where we, where, whether every student feels very known by us and their, their teachers especially, and taken of. And so I wish that that, you know, kids aren't sort of known piece came through somehow. But more than that, like in the places where we say all students or every student, I wish we said every single student. Like, I, I think it, for me, it hits differently that we're not, this isn't some broad phrase. This is actually a commitment that we're talking about every single one of our kids. So I'd like, and actually, one of those students, the student speaker who spoke earlier said that phrase, every single student. And, and to me, I think that would communicate more powerful. I think those were the main points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Okay, I'll try to be quick. And it took me a while to notice that we have diversity, equity and inclusion in order, which I like. That works with me. Just in terms of paramount not hitting, I just want to mention that tonight we use the phrase embed equity in all we do quite a bit. If you want to consider embed. I, I really like the student's point that if we're trying to make something inclusive, are we almost at the wrong starting place? You know, if we're assuming it's centered a certain way and we have to reach to be inclusive, what, what does that say about starting place? And I do want to echo, I had the same issue with the verb celebrating not connecting to reaching maximum potential as well. But, but great work and I just, I love the whole process. I love that you took the time, Dr. Keeling and Ms. Stowe, to halt, to have the students evaluate. That was definitely worth the delay. So thank you. Congratulations.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Oh, Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, the, the only other one I would add is on the strive for excellence. You know, I think we should, I don't know, strive for it. I, I feel like we should just set that as a standard, like excellence in all we do versus we're striving for it just to be more, as mentioned by other board members, committed to it, that we're doing that. So I think strive just feels like we're going to try to. I, I think we should just say excellent and, you know, whatever wording in all we do, you know, or something to that effect. But I, I'm just, you know, very, very pleased with all the work on the background of this. And, you know, plus one to carry on the, you know, students' feedback on this and, you know, getting a different perspective. And, you know, I, I do laugh, you know, when I look at some of our wording and say, yeah, that's a school term. You know, would the person on the street know what that means? So I, I appreciate, you know, those kind of feedback as we've gone through this.
Anyone else?
Would it be okay if I just jump in for a second to kind of
Absolutely, please do.
tie things up a bit? We really appreciate all this feedback and we will take this, as I said earlier, and the students and we, feedback, and we will see how we can massage it in. You may not see all of it at this point. You may see some of it materialize as we work our way through the rest of the plan as well and pick some of it up there. One of the things that we want to be cautious of, you know, and sometimes we do have a word. If we replace a word and it takes 10 words to replace that word, it does have to be succinct. So we will do our best to incorporate as much of what you have said, but you may just see some of it show up later in the goals and the strategies and further along in the document as well.
I think that makes sense. Well, Ms. Winner and Ms. Black, we really appreciate you being here and walking us through this today. And I'm excited to see what comes next.
Good to be with you.
Thank you for having us. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you so much. Dr. Felder, do you have any other business before we adjourn?
I do not. I too want to thank Leanne and Nancy and thank you, board, for your feedback. Greatly appreciated. Very helpful.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for a great meeting tonight and interesting conversations. I feel really good about a lot of the work that we have been discussing this evening. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, move to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Take care.